Guests situados en el rostrum. Los salones más cercanos están en el centro y el sur. Para los habitantes del primer piso y de las columnas anteriores de la galería VIP, los salones, el sur y la entrada principal están disponibles. Para los habitantes de la galería VIP, las entradas principales y los salones y el sur de las salones VIP están disponibles. Para los habitantes de la galería del segundo piso, hay salones disponibles a ambos lados. Para los habitantes de la galería del tercero, hay salones disponibles a los lados orientales y occidentales.
La sesión se llama para ordenar. Por favor, levanten la mano para escuchar la oración del Antem Nacional. Por favor, permanezcan sentados para la invocación por el representante Jaisal Victoria Ciu del segundo distrito de San Bongga del Sur.
Padre Dios celestial, como seguimos nuestra sesión hoy, nos reunimos ante ti para pidiernos la guía y la sabiduría de tu amor. Líneaos en cumplir nuestras obligaciones y deberes jurados para servir a nuestro querido país y a nuestros constituidores. Nuestros ayuntamientos nos conceden una decisión legislativa para el beneficio del pueblo filipino y la visión de liderar nuestro país con orgullo y honor. Que nuestras pensamientos y decisiones estén en consonancia con tu voluntad divina para que estemos seguros de que es para el bien común de nuestros ciudadanos y no para el interés de unos pocos. Por favor, bendiga la dirección de esta sala mientras guían a nosotros en cumplir nuestro mandato. También oramos por el reposo eterno de la alma de nuestro colega destacado, el honorable El PdF Barzaga Jr., y que su luz perpetua se brille sobre él. Que usted se acostume a su familia y a sus amados con su amor y compasión y que sus recuerdos y legado les den fuerza en los días posteriores. Pedimos todo esto en nombre de Jesús. Amén.
Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me refiero a que llamemos al rol de miembros.
El secretario general está dirigido a llamar al rol de miembros.
Rol de miembros: representantes honorables: Abalos, Abante, Abunda, Acharon, Asidre, Aco, Adyong, Advincula, Agarau, Alba, Albano, Almario, Almonte, Alonte, Alvarez José, Alvarez Mercedes, Alvarez Pantalyon, Amante, Amatong, Ang, Angara, Aquino, Aquino Magsaysay, Arbison, Arenas, Arrogansha, Asistio, Atide, Omentado, Balindong, Barba, Barber's, Baronda, Vasco, Bautista, Bautistalin, Benitez, Bernos, Bilyones, Biron, Bolilia, Bondok, Bonggalon, Bordado, Bosita, Breones, Brosas, Buahin, Bulut Begdam, Bustos, Cabredo, Kagas, Kahayon Uy, Calderon, Kalixto, Campos, Kawagdan, Cardema, Kari, Castro Franz, Castro Jean, Celeste, Chan, Chato, Tchuwa, Tsungalaw, Co Angelika Natasha, Co Elizaldi, Co Pilar, Co Huango Jaime Eduardo Marc, Co Huango Marc, Colada, Coliantes, Corvera, Cruz Ambrosio, Cruz Ricardo, Kuah, Kuaresma, Dagoo, Dalipe, Talon, Dayanghirang, Daza, De Jesus. De Venesia, Defensor, Delmar, De Los Santos, Dimaporo Mohamed Kalih, Dimaporo City Amina, Dionisio, Domingo, Duavit, Duhali, Duterte, D Faustino Ino, D Faustino Michael Carlos, D Ian Paul, Ecleyo, Emanu, Envergar, Escudero, Espares, Espina, Estrella, Yudella, Farías, Fernández, Ferrer Antonio, Ferrer Juliet Marie, Flores, Fortes, Frasco, Fresnedi, Fuente Belia, Galeos, García Albert, García Dante, García José Arturo, García María Angela, García Pablo John, García Vincent, Gardiola, Garín, Gasa Taya, Gato, Goed Christopher, Go Marc, Goles, Gómez, Gonzaga, González Aurelio, González Neptune, González Sandro, Goriseta, Guico, Ginto, Gulyas, Gutierrez, Jaresco, Hataman, Hernández, Herrera, Horibata, Javier, Co Olga, Co Ricardo, Co Wilton, Kong Hun, Labad Laban, Lakson, Lakson Noel, Lagman, Lagon Daphne, Lagon Sani, Lara, Lazatin, Lee, Legarda, Libanan, Limkaytchong, Loyola, Luistro, Lumayod, Makapagal Arroyo, Maceda, Madrona, Magsino, Malapitan, Mangawang, Manikiz, Manuel, Maranyon, Marcoleta, Marcos, Mariano Hernández, Marinio, Marquez, Martínez, Mastura, Matibag, Matugas, Mendoza, Mercado, Mercado Revilla, Miguel, Momo, Morden, Nava, Misay, Nograles Juan Fidel Felipe, Nograles Margarita, Nolasco, Uaminal, Olaso, Olivares, Ongtuan, Ordanes, Ortega, Uano Dizon, Padiernos, Padwano, Paglas, Palma, Panaligan, Pancho, Panotes, Pasqual, Penya, Pimentel, Plaza, Plato, Primicia Sagabas, Humaren, Puno, Kimbo, Rama, Rehensha, Remulia, Revilla Brian, Revilla Ramon Dzolo, Reyes, Rilio, Rivera, Robes, Rodríguez Ilohio, Rodríguez Rufus, Roman, Romero, Romualdes Ferdinand Martin, Romualdes Yedamari, Romualdo, Romulo, Roque, Sakdalan, Sagarbaria, Sakaluran, Salceda, Sally, Salimbangon, Salo, Santos, Saulu, Silverio, Singson Richel, Singson Ronald, Singson Mihan, Solon, Suwal, Swansing Horasyo, Swansing Mikaela Angela, Suarez, Taliado, Tamayo, Tambunting, Tan Joseph, Tan Keith Maica, Tan Reynolds Michael, Tan Samir, Tan Stephen James, Tan Tambut, Tan Chai, Tan Watko, Tariela, Teodoro, Tevez, Tiyanko, Teng, Tolentino, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tupas, Totor, Ti, Umalie, Unabya, Ungab, Uy, Valeriano, Valmayor, Vargas, Vargas Alfonso, Velasco, Veloso Twazon, Vergara, Versosa, Villia, Villia Ferte Luis Raymond, Villia Ferte Miguel Luis, Villia Nueva, Villiar, Villia Razas Juárez, Villia Rica, Violago, Yamsuwan, Yap Cristiante, Yap Christopher Sol, Yap Edvick, Yap Eric, Yu Divina Grace, Yu Jaisal Victoria, Yulo, Zamora Amparo Maria, Zamora María Carmen, Zamora Isabel María, Zubiri.
Madam presidenta, el rol de la llamada muestra que 197 miembros respondieron a la llamada. Con 197 miembros respondiendo a la llamada, el presidente declara la presencia de la llamada. Presidente de la mayoría.
Motion para suspender, madame presidenta.
La sesión suspende. La sesión resume. Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, considerando que las copias del libro número 62, datado 18 de marzo de 2024, ya se han distribuido a los miembros, me refiero a que la sesión se suspenda con la lectura, por lo tanto, aprobaré el libro dicho. Gracias, madame presidenta.
¿Hay alguna objeción? El presidente no tiene. La motion es aprobada. La lectura del libro número 62, datado 18 de marzo de 2024, se suspende y la misma es aprobada. Presidente de la mayoría.
Motion para suspender, madame presidenta.
La sesión suspende. La sesión resume. Presidente de la mayoría.
Madam presidenta, me refiero a que ahora procedamos con la referencia, con la consideración de la referencia de la empresa. Y por este propósito, me refiero a que el secretario general sea dirigido a leer el título de los presupuestos y resoluciones en primera lectura, incluyendo los reportes comités y los demás asuntos que contienen.
El secretario general está dirigido a leer el título de los presupuestos y resoluciones en primera lectura, así como las comunicaciones y reportes comités para referirse a los comités adecuados.
Referencia de la empresa: presupuestos en primera lectura. Lojo 10196, para promover la conducción responsable y establecer la responsabilidad justa por incidentes de seguridad de la carretera y violaciones de leyes de tráfico y regulaciones representados por el profesor Flores.
Para el Comité sobre Transporte.
Lojo 10197, convirtiendo la escuela secundaria Patag en Patag Irosin Sorsagon en la escuela integrada de Patag, representado por Fortes.
Para el Comité sobre Educación y Cultura.
Lojo 10198, requiriendo etiquetas de etiqueta de envío de comida prepackada y bebidas no alcohólicas, representado por Santos.
Para el Comité sobre Trabajo y Industria.
Lojo 10199, estableciendo un programa de scholarships y retiros de servicio para estudiantes deserving, representado por Romero.
Para el Comité sobre Educación y Tecnología.
Lojo 10200, proporcionando 13 meses de pago a contratos gubernamentales de personal de trabajo de servicio, representado por Santos.
Para el Comité sobre Apropiaciones.
Lojo 10201, proporcionando un sistema de alerta amarilla para prevenir el secuestro de niños, representado por Santos.
Para el Comité sobre Orden y Seguridad Pública.
Lojo 10202, institucionalizando y fortaleciendo el programa de alimentación de la Food Stamp representado por Rama.
Para el Comité sobre Servicios Sociales.
Lojo 10203, declarando el 1 de agosto de cada año una fiesta especial no trabajadora en General Luna Surigao del Norte, para ser conocida como Adlaw Nan General Luna en homenaje a su aniversario de fundación, representado por Matugas.
Para el Comité sobre Gobierno Local.
Lojo 10204, reclasificando ciertos parques de tierra de piedra ubicados en Payasan, Liangas, Surigao del Sur como áreas inestable y disposibles, representado por Momo.
Para el Comité sobre Ressources Naturales.
Lojo 10205, regulando la operación de motocicletas para contratación, representado por Kuah.
Para el Comité sobre Transporte.
Lojo 10206, instituyendo un régimen propietario para cohabitación de partners de mismo sexo, representado por Magsino.
Para el Comité sobre Población y Relaciones Familial.
Lojo 1027, fortaleciendo la Corporación de Seguridad Agrícola Filipina introduciendo una reforma basada en el mercado sobre la seguridad agrícola, representado por Varga.
Para el Comité sobre Agricultura y Alimentos.
Lojo 1028, proporcionando un sistema de redistribución y reciclado de residuos alimenticios para promover la seguridad alimenticia, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité especial en seguridad alimenticia.
Lojo 10209, estableciendo una base de datos de ADN forense en Filipinas, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité sobre Orden y Seguridad Pública.
Lojo 10210, requiriendo la establecimiento de clínicas de diálisis en todos los hospitales nacionales, regionales y provinciales y proporcionando tratamientos gratuitos de diálisis en pacientes de indigencia, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité sobre Salud.
Lojo 10211, concediendo pago inminente a los prosecutors públicos expuestos a situaciones inminentes y realizando deberes inminentes relacionados con casos asignados, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité sobre Justicia.
Lojo 10212, fortaleciendo la Comisión sobre Derechos Humanos como institución nacional de derechos humanos, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité sobre Derechos Humanos.
Lojo 10213, creando el Departamento de Resiliencia de Desastres, representados Tulfo Ralph Wendell, Tulfo Joseline y Tulfo Irwin.
Para el Comité sobre Reorganización gubernamental y el Comité sobre Resiliencia de Desastres.
Lojo 10215, modifica los poderes de la Comisión Nacional de Telecomunicaciones y reclasifica Internet como servicio de telecomunicación básico, representado por Campos.
Para el Comité sobre Información y Tecnología de Comunicación.
Lojo 10220, proporcionando iniciativas de desarrollo talentoso a los artistas locales, representado por Kahayon Uy.
Para el Comité especial en industrias creativas.
Lojo 10224, concediendo beneficios a los trabajadores de desarrollo infantil y cuidados de la casa, representado por Yamsuwan.
Para el Comité sobre Bienestar de los niños.
Lojo 10225, declarando el Parque Nacional de Islas 100 en Alaminus Pangasinan como zona turística bajo administración, gestión, mantenimiento y operación del gobierno municipal de Alaminus Pangasinan, representado por Celeste.
Para el Comité sobre Turismo.
Lojo 10226, estableciendo una casa de luján en Ayugin Shol, representados Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian y Revilla Ramon Dzolo.
Para el Comité sobre Transporte.
Lojo 10227, separando la escuela secundaria Ballas National, La Unión, extensión en La Unión, Labason, San Bongga del Norte, de la escuela secundaria Ballas Nacional, convertirla en la escuela secundaria La Unión, representado por Amaton.
Para el Comité sobre Educación y Cultura Básica.
Lojo 10228, estableciendo un porto de pescado en Maasin, San Bongga City, representado por Olaso.
Para el Comité sobre Cultura y Ressources渔具.
Lojo 10229, estableciendo un programa de scholarships y retiros de servicio para estudiantes deserving, representado por Adyong.
Para el Comité sobre Contratación y Educación Tecnológica.
Lojo 10230, proporcionando apoyo mensual a los ciudadanos mayores de medicamentos de mantenimiento prescribeados, suplementos alimenticios y vitaminas, representado por Corvera.
Para el Comité sobre Ciudadanos Mayores.
Lojo 10231, proporcionando una carta local de planos, representado por Loyola.
Para el Comité sobre Gobierno Local.
Lojo 10232, fortaleciendo los estándares de bienestar animal en Filipinas, creando el Bureau de Bienestar Animal bajo el Departamento de Agricultura, representado por Bonggalon.
Para el Comité sobre Agricultura y Alimentos.
Lojo 10233, institucionalizando un mecanismo en la declaración de estado de desastre inminente, representado por Ecleyo.
Para el Comité sobre Resiliencia de Desastres.
Lojo 10234, expandiendo la cobertura de la exención de pago de impuestos de viaje y proporcionando descuento de impuestos de viaje a los ciudadanos mayores y PWDs, representados Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Irwin, Tulfo Ralph Wendell y Yap Edvick.
Para el Comité sobre Turismo.
House Bill 10235, removing the subsequent marriage of the offender to the offended party as a cost to extinguish criminal liability by Representatives Yap Advic, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joseline, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Committee on Justice.
House Bill 10236, mandating on accident and life insurance coverage for construction workers by Representatives Tulfo Joseline, Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Ralph Wendell, and Yap Advic.
To the Committee on Labor and Employment.
House Bill 10237, separating the Ballast National High School Lapatan Extension in Lapatan, La Basón, Zamboanga del Norte from the Ballast National High School, converting it into the Ballast National High School by Representative Amatón.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 10238, separating the Gotalak National High School Mauawan Extension in Mauawan-Gotalak, Zamboanga del Norte from the Gotalak National High School, converting it into the Mauawan National High School by Representative Amado.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 10239, separating the Gotalak National High School Panganuran Extension in Panganuran-Gotalak, Zamboanga del Norte from the Gotalak National High School, converting it into the Panganuran National High School by Representative Amatón.
To the Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 10240, establishing the Northeastern Mindanao State University Hinatuan Campus in Hinatuan, Surigao del Sur by Representative Pimentel.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 10244, requiring front-of-package wording labels for prepackaged food and non-alcoholic beverages by Representative Arenas.
To the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 10245, institutionalizing the no-balance billing policy in all accredited healthcare institutions by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Health.
House Bill 10246, requiring business entities with assets at least 100 million pesos to plant trees equivalent to their carbon emission by Representative Tevez.
To the Special Committee on Forestation.
House Bill 10247, establishing the Philippine Boxing Academy by Representative Tevez.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 10248, promoting responsible driving and establishing fair accountability for road safety incidents and violations of traffic laws and regulations by Representative Tevez.
To the Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 10249, prohibiting the access of minors to alcoholic or intoxicating liquor or beverage by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Welfare of Children.
House Bill 10250, creating the Philippine Velodrome by Representative Tolentino.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Bill 10251, allowing for the appointment of faculty, researchers, and administrators with dual citizenship in public higher education institutions by Representative Go Mark.
To the Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 10252, exempting PWDs and solo parents from government fees and charges in the issuance of basic documentary requirements for employment by Representatives Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joseline, Yap Advic, Yap Eric, and Tulfo Ralph Wendell.
To the Special Committee on Persons with Disabilities and the Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 10253, providing for incentives and credit facilities for consumers of small solar power systems in the Philippines by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Energy.
Resolutions. House Resolution 1661, certifying to the existence of a vacancy in the House of Representatives, particularly the representative for the third legislative district of the province of Palawan, and calling on the comelect to fill the vacancy through a special election by Representative Villanueva.
To the Committee on Suffrage and Electoral Reforms.
House Resolution 1663, directing the appropriate committee to conduct an investigation into the Skyway Stage 3 of the collision incident which resulted into the death of a motorcycle driver and the filing by the PNP against the driver which collided with the motorcycle of a complaint of reckless imprudence resulting to homicide and damage to property by Representative Arrogancia.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1664, urging the Pagibig Fund to review and revise its loanable amount under the Pagibig Fund and User Home Financing Program to confirm prevailing economic conditions by Representative Ginto.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1665, congratulating and commending Elvin Perotro Victor for being honored with the Leonardo da Vinci International Art Prize for Visual Art in Italy by Representative Omentado.
To the Special Committee on Creative Industries.
House Resolution 1666, directing the appropriate committee of the House to conduct an inquiry on the surge of alleged Chinese students enrolling in the various higher education institutions in Kagayan Province, particularly in the city of Togegarao by Representative Lara.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1667, urging the House through the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to conduct an inquiry into the alleged extortion practices of the LTO in Region 4A Calabarzon offices from various accounts of bus drivers and operators by Representative Robes.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1668, urging the Committee on Agriculture and Food to immediately conduct an investigation on the gruesome death of a golden retriever dog named Kilua by Representative Bongalon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1669, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Renato V. Diaz, former representative of the first legislative district of Nueva Isteja during the 9th and 10th Congresses by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin Gonzalez Aurelio, Dalipe Libanan Marcos, Romualdes Yeremari, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1670, urging the appropriate committee of the House to conduct an inquiry regarding the incident during the training regimen involving a Taekwondo practitioner by Representatives Tulfo Erwin, Tulfo Joseline, Yap Advic, and Yap Eric.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1671, resolution of the House of Representatives expressing its warmest congratulations to the Philippine Army on its 127th founding anniversary by Representatives Mercado Revilla, Revilla Brian, and Revilla Ramon Cholo.
To the Committee on National Defense and Security.
House Resolution 1672, urging the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry regarding the heightened traffic congestion on tollways during Holy Week by Representative Herrera.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1673, directing the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry on the delayed implementation of the health and medical services of coconut farmers as prescribed by the Coconut Farmers and Industry Trust Fund Act and EO 172 Series of 2022 by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1674, urging the appropriate House committee to conduct an inquiry on the illegal detention of the relatives of patients due to unsettled hospital bills and refusal to release death certificate by Representative Lee.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1675, directing the House through the Committees on Agrarian Reform, Natural Resources, to conduct a joint investigation on the land-grabbing anomaly and displacement of farmers covered by the defunct Yulo Ranch in Coron and Boswanga Towns in Palawan by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1676, directing the House through the Committees on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous Peoples, Human Rights, and Agrarian Reform to conduct a joint investigation on the displacement of Ati tribe members in Boracay by armed guards allegedly due to the March 5, 2024 decision of DEDAR to cancel the Certificate of Land Ownership award in 2018 by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1677, expressing deepest sympathies and condolences to the families of the victims of the recent earthquake in east coast of Taiwan by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1678, congratulating and commending Alexandra Alex Maniego Iala for winning the double title at the W75 Kreise Beaubourg International Tennis Federation Tournament in France by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
House Resolution 1679, congratulating and commending University of the Philippines College of Law JASUP team for being the world champions in the 2024 Philip C. JASUP Moot Court Competition by Representative Kimbo.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1680, urging the United States Government through the United States Embassy in Manila to reauthorize the general system of preference for partner countries, including the Philippines by Representative Salseda.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
House Resolution 1681, directing the Committees on Social Services, Welfare of Children, Local Government, and other concerned committees of the House to conduct an inquiry on the proper implementation of the Expanded Solo Parents Welfare Act by Representative Herrera.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1680, directing the House through the Committee on National Defense and Security to conduct an investigation on the alleged recruitment of active and retired military personnel by foreign-based firms and alleged existence of Chinese sleeper cells in the Philippines by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1683, resolution commending and congratulating the University of the Philippines College of Law for winning the 2024 Philip C. JASUP International Law Moot Court Competition held in Washington, DC, USA by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin Gonzalez Aurelio, Suarez Dalipe Libanan Marcos, Ferrer Juliette Marie Romolo Calderon, Romualdes Yeremari Asidre Madrona, Rodriguez Rufus Salo, Velozotuazon, Samora Isabel Maria, Herrera, and Nograles Margarita.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1684, to call on a thorough investigation on the reported gentleman's agreement between former President Rodrigo Ardo Terte and Chinese President Xi Jinping by Representative Gonhon.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1685, urging the House through the Committee on Energy to conduct an investigation on the increase in generation and transmission charges due to the red and yellow alerts in Luzon and Visayas grids and the unscheduled outages and duration of 42 power plants by Representatives De Jesus and De Go.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1686, urging the BFP and DALG to include in their fiscal year 2025 national expenditure program the purchase of firefighting helicopters and aerial drones by Representative Rasko.
To the Committee on Public Order and Safety.
House Resolution 1688, calling for an investigation into the deployment of US missiles in northern Luzon during the Philippine-US Balikatan exercises by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1689, expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of former Senator Rene Augusto Verselus Sagisag by Representative Olivares.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1690, urging the House to conduct an investigation into the frequent red and yellow power alerts and forced shutdown of nearly 50 power plants to hold generation companies accountable for power rate hikes due to their outages and to ensure consumer protection during energy crisis by Representatives Castro, Franz, Rosas, and Manuel.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1691, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable Elpidio PDF Barzaga Jr., representative of the lone legislative district of Dasmarinyas City, province of Cavite by Representatives Romualdes Ferdinand Martin Gonzalez Aurelio, Suarez Dalipe Libanan Marcos, Romualdes Yeremari, and Asidre.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Resolution 1692, expressing the deep sympathy and heartfelt condolences of the House to the family of Honorable Elpidio PD Barzaga Jr., representative of the fourth legislative district of Cavite by Representative Tambunting.
To the Committee on Rules.
House Concurrent Resolution 24, granting consent to Lieutenant General Charlton Shan M. Garland, former commander of the Philippine Marine Corps and current deputy chief of staff of the AFP, to receive the Legion of Merit Award from the government of the United States of America by Representative Arenas.
To the Committee on Foreign Affairs.
Message from the President. Message dated March 21, 2024 by His Excellency President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr., returning the following enrolled House bills without his signature. House Bill 1028, converting the Sawang Makalas Road in Romblon-Romblon into a national road. House Bill Number 1029, converting the road stretching from Tugis Odiongan to Tugdan-Alcantara all in the province of Romblon into a national road. House Bill Number 1030, converting the road stretching from Sitio Boliganay Paniki Odiongan to Sitio Kabaliwan Bachawan San Agustin all in the province of Romblon into a national road. And House Bill 1031, converting the Sablayan Agpanaba at Bagakay Road, a section of the Romblon Circumferential Road into a national road.
To the Committee on Rules.
Message from the Senate. Message dated March 20, 2024, which was received by the House on March 21, 2024, informing the House that on March 19, 2024, the Senate approved Conference Committee Report on the Disagreeing Provisions of Senate Bill Number 2386 and House Bill 6558 on instituting reforms in real property valuation and assessment in the Philippines.
To the Committee on Rules.
Communications. Letter dated October 25, 2023 of the NEDA secretary submitting to the House copies of certain reports which were posted on their official website.
To the Committee on Economic Affairs.
Letter dated March 14, 2024 of the BSP governor transmitting to the House a copy of their report on the outstanding Philippine external debt as of December 31, 2023.
To the Committee on Ways and Means.
Letters dated March 18 and 22, 2024 of the BSP Bank Officer 6, Office of the General Counsel and Legal Services transmitting to the House duly certified copies of certain BSP issue 1 says.
To the Committee on Banks and Financial Terminaries.
Various communications submitted by officials of certain local government units regarding their fund utilization and status of program project implementation of local government support fund as attested by the respective local chief executives.
To the Committee on Appropriations.
Letters dated March 11 and 21, April 3 and April 5, 2024 of the Executive Secretary of the Office of the President Malakanyang transmitting two original copies each of the following republic acts which were signed by President Ferdinand Romualdes Marcos Jr. RA 11983, providing for a new passport law. RA 11984, mandating public and private educational institutions to allow disadvantaged students with unpaid tuition and other school fees to take periodic and final examinations. RA 11985, strengthening and revitalizing the salt industry in the Philippines. RA 11986, creating a barangay in Barobo, Surigao del Sur to be known as Barangay Ginhalinan. RA 11987, renaming the Bohol Island Circumferential Road as the President Carlos Pigarsia Circumferential Road. RA 11988, renaming the Ordaneta City Bypass Road in the city of Ordaneta Pangasinan to Ambassador Eduardo Dan Ding M. Kong Huangco Jr. Avenue. RA 11989, renaming the Tambakan Bridge in Barangay Tambakan, city of Iligan, in northern Mindanao region as the Mariano Lucho Badelias Senior Bridge. RA 11990, renaming the national highway stretching for certain barangays in the municipalities of Gowa, Tinambak, and Ceruma, all in the province of Camarines Sur as Speaker Arnold Fonoli-Fuentebelia Highway. RA 11991, renumbering the Cebu First, Second, Third, and Fourth District Engineering Offices to conform and correspond respectively with the numbering of the legislative districts in the province of Cebu. RA 11992, creating a District Engineering Office in the second legislative district of the province of Southern Leyte. RA 11993, dividing Barangay 176, also known as Barangay Bagong Silang in the city of Kaloakan, into six separate and independent barangays to be known as Barangay 176-A, Barangay 176-B, Barangay 176-C, Barangay 176-D, Barangay 176-E, and Barangay 176-F. And RA 11994, creating an additional District Engineering Office in Zamboanga City.
To the Archives.
Committee Reports. Committee Report Numbers 1042 to 1048, submitted by the Committee on Local Government on House Bill Numbers 10216 to 10219 and 10221 to 10223 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 104 and 1052, submitted by the Committee on Health and Appropriations on House Bill Numbers 10241 and 10248 respectively. Committee Report Numbers 1050 and 1051, submitted by the Committee on Legislative Franchises on House Bill Numbers 10242 and 10243 respectively. Committee Report Number 1053, submitted by the Committee on Energy on House Bill Number 10261. Committee Report Number 1054, submitted by the Committees on Energy and Public Works and Highways on House Resolution 1687. Committee Report 1055, submitted by the Committee on Sustainable Development Goals on House Bill Number 10263. And Committee Report Number 1056, submitted by the Committee on Labor and Employment on House Bill 10267.
The aforementioned committee reports are all referred to the Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, may I request that the guests of this representation and that of Congressman Gil Bongalon, the following public officials of LGU Huban, province of Sorcegon, be recognized and acknowledged, they are as follows. Vice Mayor Felipe Guasa, Councilor Jerson Carino, Councilor Ryan de Jesus, Councilor Anita Desder, Councilor Ray Romeo Guab, Councilor Ray Balbedina, Councilor Russell Balesa, Councilor Manuel T. Londres, and the ABC President Silberio Jeremias, former ABC President Roger Fullieros, and the following punung barangay, Jose Algrin Abok, Mayra Fullieros, Joel Militante, Freddie Alcomendas, Jonathan Hesha Sarenno, Ramon Bon, Martin E. Fulay, Raúl Griego, Roger Geull, Bernardo Honra, Clyde Alonso Gómez, Alberto Buban, Antonio Nicolás, Arnold Gualbes, José Grifalda, and Ermi Abulín, as well as Liga Secretary Agnes Nava, barangay secretary Noel J. Nava, and the following Liga staff, Carl Guantero, Francisco Lagadja, Gilbert Gruta, Lawrence Baldola, and Marco Sarmiento.
To the guests of Congowo Fortez and Cong Gil Bongalon, welcome to the House of Representatives. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to suspend session for a few minutes.
Session suspended.
Session resumed, Majority Leader.
Distinguished colleagues, the honorable Speaker, Ferdinand Martin G. Romaldes will address the body.
Thank you. Welcome back. I hope you had a restful break.
Thank you, thank you. Please relax and take your seats. Honorable Deputy Speakers, Majority Leader, Minority Leader, distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, a pleasant good afternoon to you all. Allow me to extend a warm welcome to each and everyone. After a short respite from our plenary duties, we hope everybody had a good rest and renewed relationship with our family, friends, and constituents. As we embark on the remaining session days of the second regular session of the 19th Congress, allow me first to mention for the record that the House has successfully passed on third and final reading all 20 LEDAC priority measures that are targeted for passage by June 2024. A 100% completion rate, congratulations. That is all because of your hard work, your industry, your attendance, and your participation. You've done a great job. National security plus economic development equals improved living conditions for Filipinos. With this in mind, we must now direct our legislative focus on the most pressing needs that our countrymen face at the moment: strengthening national security and enhancing economic development. We recognize that peace is the cornerstone of prosperity, hence, we need to enact laws that fortify our national defense and enhance our international security posture. As such, these initiatives are critical in maintaining sovereignty and stability and enabling our nation to pursue developmental goals without the shadow of an external threat. Our historical trilateral meeting was all about our national security. Under the leadership of President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr., we have taken significant steps to rejuvenate and deepen our international relationships. Together with some of our honorable members, we were privileged to witness the historical trilateral meeting among President Marcos Jr., United States President Joe Biden, and Japanese Prime Minister Fumio Kishida. This meeting underscored our strategic role in regional politics and security. This event followed the historical address by His Excellency Fumio Kishida, Prime Minister of Japan, to our House of Representatives last November, an event that in itself marked a milestone in our diplomatic engagement. We congratulate President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. for the monumental diplomatic victory, particularly in the context of the West Philippine Sea. This historic meeting signifies a strong and united commitment that the United States and Japan and the Philippines that will uphold the principles of international law and ensure the freedom of navigation and overflight in the Indo-Pacific region, which are vital in ensuring peace, stability, and prosperity. It also paved the way for the enhanced cooperation in addressing regional challenges, particularly in promoting maritime security and safeguarding territorial integrity. It highlights the importance of respecting the sovereign rights of the states within the exclusive economic zones, consistent with the international law as reflected in the 1982 United Nations Convention on the Law of the Seas, otherwise known as the UNCLAW. May I also hasten to add that coinciding with a momentous trilateral summit, we conducted extensive deliberations with a number of our fellow, well, American legislators on Capitol Hill. And during the reception for the members of the U.S.-Philippines Friendship Caucus at the Waldo Astoria in Washington, DC, we stressed the importance of strengthening defense and economic cooperation between the Philippines and the United States. Through our persistent lobbying, it is worthy to mention that the Philippines was included as part of the beneficiaries of the $8.1 billion aid package approved by the United States Congress for its allies in the Indo-Pacific. Following our series of meetings with United States lawmakers, we sought the expansion of the joint military exercises in the Philippines, appealed for an increased United States foreign military financing, and welcomed the Philippines Enhanced Resiliency Act of 2024, otherwise known as the PERA bill, sponsored by Senator Bill Hagerty of Tennessee. We expressed our sincere appreciation to the members of the United States Congress for the bipartisan support on this groundbreaking measure, which is crucially beneficial for Filipinos amid escalating tensions in the West Philippine Sea. We also expressed our gratitude to Representative Darrell Isa of California, who introduced the amendment to the bill encouraging the State Department to allocate $500 million in foreign military financing to the Philippines. In the volatile, uncertain, and complex environment of today, we must opt for collaborative efforts to address our common problems more swiftly and effectively. This philosophy of proactive engagement and cooperation is at the heart of our approach in the House of Representatives. It aligns with the foreign policy direction set by President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. that the Philippines is a friend to all and an enemy to none. By strengthening peace and security, we can create an environment conducive to economic activities and development initiatives. These in turn contribute to further stabilizing our nation by reducing poverty, creating jobs, and improving living standards, which in turn diminishes the likelihood of social unrest. This fundamental, this is fundamental to the sustainable development and is a cornerstone of our legislative agenda. Our economic development, among the major benefits, the Philippines would derive from the trilateral summit and improve the lives of our people include the following: the launching of the Luzon Economic Corridor, which will support connectivity between Subic, Clark, Manila, and Batangas by accelerating coordinated investments in high-impact infrastructure projects, including rail, ports modernization, clean energy, and semiconductor supply chains and deployments, agribusiness, and civilian port upgrades at the Subic Bay. The United States and Japan pledged to provide at least $8 million for open radio access network, field trials, and the Asia Open Ran Academy based in Manila to enable future commercial involvement and an open, interoperable, secure, reliable, and trusted information communications technologies ecosystem in the Philippines. Through the Chips and Science Act, International Technology Security and Innovation Fund, the United States and the Philippines will coordinate efforts to develop and expand the Philippine semiconductor workforce to strengthen the global supply chain. Expanded partnerships on safe and secure nuclear capacity building, including trilateral cooperation on civilian nuclear workforce development to advance the Philippine Civil Nuclear Energy Program. Expanded trilateral cooperation on the deployment of clean energy technologies, including renewable energy projects such as solar and wind to support energy requirements in the Philippines and help ensure a just energy transition. At least $100 billion in investments from the United States and Japan may come to the Philippines in five to 10 years as a result of the historical trilateral summit. Likewise, our other areas of cooperation are in the pipeline, such as greater maritime domain awareness and coast guard cooperation, sustainable critical infrastructure, semiconductor supply, chain resilience, digital transformation, and energy security through harnessing renewable energy. Visibly, the improved living conditions for Filipinos. During this 19th Congress, we have put in place significant reforms that have reshaped the economic and social landscape of the Philippines. We enacted pivotal tax reforms designed to invigorate our economy by simplifying the tax code, encouraging investment and ensuring a fair system for all. These measures have laid the groundwork for a more robust economic framework, attracting foreign investments and stimulating local entrepreneurship. Our commitment to infrastructural development is exemplified by the continuation of the Build, Build, Build program, now through the Build Better More. This ambitious initiative has not only improved connectivity across our archipelago, but also generated tens of thousands of jobs, bolstering our economy and enhancing the daily lives of our citizens. A recent OCHA research survey showed a notable decrease in self-rated poverty and hunger among Filipino families, a decrease of 3% in both the number of families who consider themselves poor from 45% in the fourth quarter of 2023 to 42% during the first quarter of 2024, and the self-rated hunger from 14% to 11% during that same period. These figures represent a decline of approximately 800,000 families in both categories, a clear indication that our economic measures are effectively reaching and improving the lives of our people. We attribute this sharp decline to the anti-poverty programs of the administration of President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr., and these include the Pantawid Pamilyang Pilipino Program for Peace, the DSWD's Assistance to Individuals in Crisis Situation, the DOLAS, Tulung Panghanap Buhay sa ating disadvantaged displaced workers, and other programs such as the Free College Education, Free Health Insurance, and the Grant of Direct Cash Subsidies. The Ayuda Para Sa Kapos Angkita Program under the DSWD, which we included in the 2024 national budget, was envisioned to benefit 12 million poor and low-income families or a total of 48 million Filipinos by receiving a one-time financial grant of $5,000 pesos. Binigyan nating buhay dito sa kongreso ang lahat ng programa ito sa pamamagitan ng paglalaan ng karampatang da budget. Tugon ito sa hamon ng pangulong Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. na tumulong lahat para labanan ang kagutuman at mapangat ang kabuhayan ng lahat ng Filipino. This positive trajectory in reducing poverty and hunger underscores the impact of our targeted policies aimed at enhancing economic stability and providing necessary support to the most vulnerable sectors, the decrease in the number of families who consider themselves food poor from 42% to 37%, further attest to the success of our food security programs. Together with the Marcos administration, our collective efforts in the House of Representatives to control inflation and increase household income are bearing fruit. These improvements in self-rated poverty and hunger are more than statistics, as they represent real gains in the everyday lives of our kababayan. Each percentage point decrease reflects thousands of families who now have better access to necessities and a more hopeful outlook on the future. While we celebrate these achievements, we also acknowledge that much work still needs to be done. We will continue to strengthen our social programs, enhance economic opportunities, and ensure that the growth we are fostering itself by every Filipino family across our nation: healthcare, educational, and digital infrastructure. In the House of Representatives, our development agenda initiatives are quite expansive. We target pivotal areas such as healthcare, education, and digital infrastructure. In healthcare, we are committed to expanding access and improving the quality of services, making healthcare affordable and accessible to every Filipino. And in education, we aim to create a more liberalized system that not only meets global standards, but also equips our youth with the necessary skills to thrive in a globalized economy. Additionally, we aim to enhance digital infrastructure and ensure that every Filipino can benefit from the digital revolution, bridging digital divides and fostering economic inclusivity. We aim not only to continue our current path, but to accelerate our efforts. We are exploring innovative legislative measures that promote technological advancement and environmental sustainability. These initiatives are designed to ensure that the Philippines not only keeps pace with the global trends, but also sets a benchmark for innovation and responsible governance. We invite all sectors to engage with the, with us. Their insights, expertise, and participation are invaluable as we forge a path forward. Through collaborative efforts, we can build a future that reflects our highest aspirations and fulfills the promise of prosperity and peace for all Filipinos. Oversight through legislative investigations. On the gentleman's agreement in the West Philippine Sea, on the issue of the West Philippine Sea, we support President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. in denouncing the secret gentleman's agreement between former President Rodrigo Rojo Duterte and Chinese President Xi Jinping. But at the same time, in the exercise of our oversight powers, we will direct the appropriate House committees to conduct an inquiry in aid of legislation to determine the adverse impact of such agreements on our national interests, particularly our sovereignty, sovereign rights, and territorial integrity. Like President Ferdinand R. Marcos, we are horrified by the idea of compromising the country's rights over the West Philippine Sea. Ayunin Sho is part of the country's exclusive economic zone, as reaffirmed by the 2016 arbitral ruling on the South China Sea arbitration case. Likewise, under Article 56 of the United Nations Convention of the Law of the Sea, the coastal state, which in this case is clearly the Philippines, has the right to build and maintain structures within its exclusive economic zone. This would clearly mean that our country has every right to protect and safeguard all features within our EEZ, including the Ayunin Sho. Our country's territory, sovereignty, and sovereign rights may have been compromised by a deal guise as an agreement to maintain the peace and status quo in the West Philippine Sea. The so-called gentleman's agreement between the former president and China on the non-supply of the BRP Sheira Madre, grounded in Ayunin Sho in the West Philippine Sea, is tantamount to the surrender of our country's sovereign rights over our exclusive economic zone. We believe that in the end, upholding our territorial integrity and sovereignty in accordance with our constitution and with international law is what matters the most. On cybersecurity matters. In recent months, despite employing proper and updated cybersecurity websites of various key government agencies such as the Philippine Health Insurance Corporation, the Philippine Statistics Authority, the Department of Science and Technology, the Philippine National Police, the House of Representatives, and Bureau of Customs, among others, were subjected to various forms of cyber attacks, including data breach that may have exposed confidential, sensitive, or protected information. Given the unabated incidence of the cybersecurity threats, it is imperative that we formulate remedial measures with urgency to complement and support the implementation of the national cybersecurity plan by the national agencies and instrumentalities, government-owned or controlled corporations and organizations, and local government units. Hence, we will direct the Committee on Information and Communications Technology and the Committee on Public Information to conduct a joint inquiry in aid of and the Committee on Public Information to conduct a joint inquiry in aid of legislation on the reported cyberattacks targeting government websites and formulate remedial legislation to improve government countermeasures against cybersecurity threats. On the prices of rice and other basic goods, through the Committee on Trade and Industry, we also plan to spearhead an investigation in aid of legislation into the widening gap between farm gate and retail prices of rice and other basic goods. The committee should start the ball rolling for an investigation into the disconnect between the farm gate and retail prices of basic goods. The discrepancy between farm gate and retail prices of basic goods is alarming and warrants immediate attention. We cannot ignore the plight of our farmers who are struggling to make ends meet, and nor can we turn a blind eye to the burden placed on our consumers. The farm gate prices of rice, poultry, pork, and even onions have been maintained for the past three months, so there should be no spike in the prices of these items. The House should look into the price discrepancy in the exercise of its oversight function to conduct a thorough review of existing laws to protect the interests of both consumers and producers and to deter profiteering. It is imperative that we conduct a comprehensive review of our laws to ensure that they effectively safeguard the interests of our farmers and consumers. We must take proactive measures to prevent profiteering and promote a fair and transparent trading environment. Thus, we urge all stakeholders, including government agencies, industry representatives, and consumer advocacy groups to actively participate in the investigation and contribute to the formulation of effective policy interventions. We must identify and address loopholes that contribute to profiteering and unfair pricing practices within the supply chain. And at the end of the day, we want to make sure that all stakeholders in whatever industry or sectors are viable. If they are in the business side of it, so that it becomes sustainable, so that we can continue delivering basic goods and services to the consumers at sustainable and affordable prices. In conclusion, together, we are making significant strides towards a poverty-free Philippines. Let us continue to support one another and work collectively to build a brighter and more prosperous future for all. Moving forward, let us continue to support President Ferdinand R. Marcos Jr. and work hand in hand towards a future of peace, progress, and prosperity for all Filipinos. In closing, let us be reminded of our collective responsibility and the opportunity at this moment. It is a time for bold actions and steadfast commitment. The House of Representatives of the 19th Congress is fully committed to this cause, ready to enact the necessary legislation that ensures a stable, prosperous Philippines. Thank you for your trust and engagement and your partnership. Let us all commit to a productive legislative session and a brighter future for our nation. Thank you. Mr. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to consider House Resolution Number 1691. And for this purpose, may we direct the Secretary General to read the title of the resolution.
The Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Resolution Number 1691.
House Resolution Number 1691, Resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of Honorable El Pedro Pidi E. Barzaga Jr., Representative of the Lone Legislative District of Dasmarinyas City, Province of Cabite.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adopt House Resolution Number 1691 in consolidation with House Resolution Number 1692.
There is a motion to adopt House Resolution 1691 in consolidation with House Resolution 1692. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, say nay. The ayes have it. House Resolution Number 1691 in consolidation with House Resolution 1692 is adopted. Majority Leader.
Mr. Speaker, I move to adjourn session until tomorrow, April 30 at 3 o'clock in the afternoon.
There is a motion. Chair, here is no objection. Motion approved. We adjourn till tomorrow.
Recording stopped.